Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Township, Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees Meeting, March twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending. We have a full house tonight, it looks like. So if you're on your way over, there is one seat left. You might get it. Tonight, before we start, I just want to take a moment to congratulate our treasurer, Michael Showstack, who is, works with SEMCOG, Southeastern Michigan County Governments. Michael had the honor of receiving a fellowship from SEMCOG. And Michael, would you like to tell us about it tonight?
Sure. So I was awarded a fellowship by SEMCOG to attend the Senior Executives Program for local, state and local officials at the Harvard Kennedy School of Government. It's in July. It's a three-week, very intense program, I'm told. And it's with elected officials from, I'm told, around the world. So I'm very appreciative of the opportunity.
Congratulations. Wonderful. And so tonight, let's open up for public comment. If you're here to speak of any issue, other than anything that's on for a public hearing, you're welcome to come up to the microphone, my right, your left, and state your comment. You have three minutes. If not, we'll close public comment and move on to item number two, consider the consent agenda. And is there a motion or a comment on the consent agenda?
I would like to remove B and C.
B and C?
Yes.
Okay, we'll remove B and C, and we'll make those three A and B before we get to the water and sewer rates, okay? Any other comments? If not, I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. And nay? No? Okay, all in favor. Okay, so then, let's move to item number three. Let's call it three A or B. Approve, Mark, you said, the two thousand and twenty-five Bloomfield Township Maintenance Agreement with Road Commission of Oakland County?
Correct.
Do you have a comment on that?
I, I think for our residents, it'd be helpful to understand what streets are covered and not covered, and especially with the, what happens during SAD meetings and the amount of money going out. Some residents might feel it's, should be used to fix their subdivision streets. And I think that should be clarified.
Okay. Noah, would you like to speak to that?
Our maintenance agreement covers sub-local roadways within Bloomfield Township.
But it's not the subdivision, subdivisions, correct?
It is subdivision roadways. That's all we take care of as Bloomfield Township. What we don't do is reconstruction.
So what, what are the fees that we're paying to our, the, for the maintenance of in this?
The fees we're paying to them?
Yes.
They pay us.
They're paying us.
Eight hundred some thousand.
Eight hundred some thousand to fix potholes on the roads.
No.
To plow snow. Every, all of my operations, snow plowing, pavement preservation program, which is pothole filling, grading gravel roadways, tree emergency response, storm grain cleanout, those are the items that are paid for.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll look for a motion to approve that item three. We'll call it B.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Okay, we'll move now to three C, approval payroll and vouchers for March twenty-fourth. Mark, you had a question on that?
My standing, no vote stands. Nothing has changed, so.
Okay, make a motion.
Okay, make a motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Okay, six to one. Thank you. Okay, item number three, introduction of the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six Water and Sewer Rates, presented by Noah Maholski, Director of Department of Public Works. Welcome back, Noah.
Thank you. All right. Just an introduction tonight, so I'll kind of build the framework out for the rates for this year. I know I've spoken with many of you and kind of gone through some of the preliminary data. So some of that stuff I'll breeze through a little bit quicker. And this is the same presentation, for the most part, except for the numbers that I've given every year for the last three or four years. So one important item that you have to realize is that rates are homegrown, and they're very much home rule. And we drive that rate-making process, and that rate-making process is tailored to our system, our community, and kind of our processes here, right? So there's communities out there in Michigan that just charge a flat fee for their water use. And that's legal and justifiable, but not something we would do within our water system. So we can have those wild swings, and we're in the driver's seat when it comes to rate-making. So another huge part of our rate is that thirty-nine percent of our overall consumption is based off irrigation. That is an outlier, and that impacts everything about the system, from its sizing to the ability of Great Lakes water to provide the water that we need when we need it. Key other rate factors, right? If it rains a lot, there's not a lot of people watering their lawns. Obviously, that impact is multiplied by the fact that most of our people are heavy irrigators, right? Supplier increases over the years. Obviously, inflation is high right now, and the commodities that it takes for Great Lakes water or for, to treat the sewage and/or to treat the water, those prices are going up, the same way that every other price is going up right now. Additionally, and I talked about the factor of the irrigation use on the system, there's a max day peak hour that's based on our flows. In Detroit, DWSD, Great Lakes water has to be prepared to provide us that on the worst day, and that's typically a hot day in July. So our thirstiest hour of the thirstiest day drives our rate a little bit as well. So, and then just distance and elevation factors that kind of come into play. Additionally, let me get down, sorry, on the back. We hear a lot about other communities and how their rates compare to ours. So we like to look, you know, again, rates are very homegrown. So like taking West Bloomfield, for instance, they have sixty-five thousand people in West Bloomfield, and they have three hundred and seventy miles of water main, right? So just, there's a hundred and thirty-three residents, or a hundred and seventy-six residents in West Bloomfield that pay in per mile of water main. That's not the case in Bloomfield. We have less residents paying in because we have more piping. That's a symptom or a, kind of an outcome of the largest state lots that we have, and that type of stuff. So if you think of like a city like Birmingham, for instance, twenty-one thousand people, far less population than us, but they only have a hundred and one miles of water main, right? So they have two hundred and fifteen residents paying in for each mile of water main. That's not the case for us. In Bloomfield Township, we have forty-four thousand people, roughly three hundred and thirty miles of water main, so roughly three times the length of the system that Birmingham does, that we have to take care of. And then we only have, we have a hundred and thirty-three residents paying in per mile. So they have less area to cover and more people paying in on that area. So of course, their rate's going to be less in that circumstance. All right, so just a summary of what you can expect. I'm going to get some feedback on a couple points from you guys today. I'm going to go back, we'll tweak the model. I'll give you some, I know what we're expecting from our suppliers and what we can do to cut into the reserves to, to lower the rate for people or augment that increase, which we have been doing for the last three years. One of the increases we're looking at is ten percent, though, so that is a little bit higher than we've seen in the last few years. So gathering the feedback tonight, go update the model, then I'll come back on April fourteenth and seek approval for the rates. And those rates will be applied on the April billing, so I have until the end of April. That's why I can go into April to get rates approved, because we take the readings April first. We don't actually bill till the end of the month. I'll breeze through these, but water and sewer, WS, O and M, operations and maintenance, FF, fixed fee, let me see, capital improvement, we, I guess our unit is important, I won't skip that, right? It's a thousand gallons our unit. Other communities out there are a hundred cubic feet, that's seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. So another, when people say our rates are high, you got to make sure you're talking apples to apples. Like, I can't go to Canada and get gas over there and expect that I'm getting it for cheaper just because they sell it by the quart, or by, you know, the liter over there. So that's the paradigm that we're under. A lot of, each community decides their, their unit, and so that can drive the costs. So WRC is our supplier for sewer. Great Lakes water is the overall sewer treater and water treater in the area. We're a single source. And SACWA is the consortium that we get our, our actual water from at a discount. So humans make things difficult, but calculating the rate is really a pretty simple task, right? It's a simple division equation where we take our revenue requirements on the top, what we need to fund my department and buy our commodities throughout the year, and we divide that by the total number of water that we believe we're going to use throughout the year. So where it gets tricky is weather, for instance. You know, five or six more sunny days throughout a year can really impact the rate, because people are watering and irrigating. Whereas if we have a really wet summer, we're probably going to put ourselves into a situation where they're going to be going into reserves, or we're going to be cutting things closer. So, and then additionally, you have outside factors that are at play here, which is, we have declining usage, which is a national trend. So if you think of a situation where costs are always going up and our usage is always going down, we're always going to have higher rates, right? Because the, we're just dividing that by a smaller number, and that's going to result in higher rates. So as people use less water, the cost to produce it, the, my staff, O and M staff remains the same, right? So those costs increase the water costs at that point. So, other key, I, I said a nominal decline. It's like one percent every two to three years decline in usage that we're seeing. Our estimate for the amount of usage that we're going to have throughout a year is dead-on. SACWA goes by like a five-year average. We go much deeper into the average, and we're right around the average each year. The MEU, we're going to look at grouping those inch-and-a-half customers down with the one-inch customers. This is a, an issue that we've exposed through our customer base and also through kind of researching what our customer makeup is. The justification for this is, in every other community that I've researched, inch-and-a-half customers are commercial. And in Bloomfield Township, that's not the case. We have seventeen hundred and nine of these customers that are on inch-and-a-half lines, like three hundred of them are, are resident, are our commercial. So the vast majority of these are residential, and that's, I think, the, the, we want to couch costs into those commercial entities. At, one, we don't have that commercial base to couch those costs in. We're largely vast majority residential, but this corrects that issue. Then we would look at next year, doing the full rate study, and then that's when we're going to, I'll kind of get into that a little bit later, but that's when we'll look at, does the MEU structure need to be there? Do we go to a full-tiered rate? How does this look going into the future? And that's kind of going to be your homework. When I send you out of here, my last slide, I'll kind of framework all that, that we got to kind of think about in the next year coming up. We want to have strong support for our capital improvement project, right? Staff believes this, engineering believes this, we believe, the board believes this, and is highly supportive of a strong capital improvement project. So we are going to keep funding that and maintaining to a high level. I mean, I'm pretty sure not one board member is going to say that it's acceptable to have fifty or sixty additional water main breaks throughout the year, right? So we are additionally, to support that in the field, we're adding an asset manager position that'll liaise between engineering and our people in the field. What we're doing is we're, due to attrition and retirements, we're losing the brain base to the group, so we're trying to create a manual, an asset manager, and bring that knowledge base back in, so that we can run the system more efficiently. So, another thing with the capital improvement project that I'll talk about, we're kind of done in the neighborhoods, to a large extent. So we're looking at a lot of these bigger transmission main projects. And when you think about that, you think about tearing up Maple Road from Losher all the way to Cranbrook and replacing the transmission main underneath that road. We're just into where we can't kind of pick small neighborhoods and do small projects. We're now to the point where we need to do like Maple Roads and stuff like that. So, so that's going to take investment, and we're going to have to talk about how to structure those type of projects. Because, yeah, I'll get into it a little bit later. Continued focus on the meter replacement program. We're nearly half-complete as of February two thousand and twenty-five. We're going to have the data in place to make decisions about tiered rates next year. So the look would be to go out for a rate study in December, secure the contractor, start having public meetings to determine what the residents feel are the priorities for the water system. And then we'll come back, January, February, have study sessions, public meetings, and then implement the rates, March, April next year. So, and I'll talk about some of the factors that we'll be looking at there. So total expenses, taking a kind of a step back again, we got our commodity charges, we got our township O and M, that's my piece of the pie. Then we have Corey's engineering piece of the pie in the CIP, and we had some bond debt that's still out there for the system. So, I got an estimate from SACWA, which they originally came out at like seven and a half percent from Great Lakes water, then passed through to us. They negotiated it down to five point three eight percent increase. WRC, that's that big ten percent increase in there. And what they did, our, our costs for sewer are fixed. They're, what they do is they have probes in the sewer that measures the quantity of sewer inside the pipe. And then they apportion it out to different communities, based on the flow and the populations upstream. And then we're charged based on that apportionment. So our apportionment went up. Our percentage of flow in the pipe went up. Between those, it was about ten years ago that they did the last study on this, so that's why we've got that major increase. Their average increases for WRC are, they told me are somewhere from seven to, seven to seven and a half percent. So we're just above their average increases, from what they're telling me. So, these are all estimates, because these are on a July to June budget year. So these are all estimates until their boards have met, and they're good, high-level estimates, because they're already shopping these rates around. But that is the reality. Things could change between now and then, and this is another thing where we're making our best educated guess here, on, on what these things are going to shake out. Just like the weather, we have to make our best educated guess. All right, so DPW, my end, right? Focus on asset management, transitional planning. We got a foreman who's twenty-two-plus years, who's going to be, you know, retiring soon. We've got another crew leader who is also high in the, you know, about to retire. So that's why we're planning with these asset maintenance and the manual that we're doing. Typical O and M and customer service, we are the frontward face of the water and sewer department, and we, our own staff, are the ones that actually go and visit the homes. That's a big thing for us. We provide very good service in that regard. We do some regulatory stuff that we have to throw in there, like inspecting our manholes, the cross-connection program. We have, you know, we're in charge of meeting all those regulatory requirements. Then we're, so we'll talk about CIP here. We're talking about Maple Road. Right now, we're designing Maple Road. That's a seven million dollar project, right? And so Vernor's Estates, for instance, we're doing six million over two years, so we've been able to split that CIP cost. But we don't think it's wise to rip Maple Road up two times, you know, two consecutive years, back-to-back. So we'll be pushing to do that project in a one-year timeframe. So we're going to start building in that reserve and that planning in there to accomplish that project. This is where we need to start getting inventive and staging these projects and try, that's why Vernor's Estates was split over two years. We have three million dollars in rate-funded CIP money that's baked into the rate. So we were able to fund that with no impact to the rate over a two-year period. Whereas Maple Road, we probably won't decide to do it that way, right? So we may look at grouping these bigger projects, you know, bonding may be the way to go. We want, in my opinion, we want to try to avoid wild swings in the rate. So we don't want to say, okay, Maple Road is coming in two thousand and twenty-seven, let's raise the rate by forty percent in two thousand and twenty-six to prepare for that, right? We want to take some, we want to use a three to five-year planning approach in that, in my opinion. Unless we're going to bond these major projects, right? Because that's a different animal. But that discussion will be forthcoming, and that will obviously has germane to the rate. Because if we can go out and bond a whole bunch of projects, we have to get them done in a certain period of time, so that's a limitation. But it obviously doesn't impact your rate as much when you're funding that over a twenty-year period, you know, in the case of a twenty-year bond. So, meter replacement program, I talked about this, and I'll talk about the Eye on Water. So we are, after we get a few more in this year, we will have the data required. I've been told by our rate consultant, we'll have the data required to look at a tiered rate. So we're finally getting there, right? There's, so in addition, you know, this, obviously, this, the new meter software and that allow us to bill our customers, so that's a primary thing. But then, from a customer standpoint, it allows them to be in the driver's seat a little bit more. I know Val has her own instance where this came to play, where she found a leak, a forty-gallon-a-day leak. Took you maybe two weeks to find it, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, we didn't find it.
But that's the kind of carrot to the customer. They get to be in the driver's seat, they get to see their flow, they get to know more about their water usage. And then the, the trend has been that they will limit that usage, right? And from a water operator's perspective, we don't necessarily want people limiting their usage, but we do want high customer service benefits, right? So, so then, we're in year four, this will fund year four of the program, right? And we'll be at that significant level, or we'll have the data we need to make decisions about the rate. We'll finish out the program, but then we can start making decisions about a tiered rate. We can look at whether we want a fully burdened rate, where we get rid of fixed fees, and we go to a, we take some more risk on, and to go to a fully tiered rate, right? DTE, for instance, has a two-tier rate. You're either a low user or a high user, right? I envision, you know, we're going to let the data tell us how many rate, how many rungs on the ladder we need. But I don't think a two-tier rate will do it for us. I think we need to split our users into a few more categories than that, but the data will tell us that. So, that's one thing where you guys are going to, we're going to put significant effort into doing study sessions with you guys, getting you on board with, you know, what it means to take this risk if we, you know, half of our, or a majority of our costs, all of our sewer costs are fixed costs. So I believe fixed fees should be a component of any rate, because again, our major, one of our major costs is completely a hundred percent fixed. So we take risk every time we make a sewer variable rate, and we will not, will come up short, right? And that forces conservative thinking and planning. So, and the aggressive program has been to get over the data hump. And we need to be aggressive, because, you know, people know that the meters slow down, and that's why we, we, you know, over these five-year period of the, of the program, we're going to make the money back off the new meters. We, we basically would have lost that revenue by the meters slowing down over this period. A little bit more about the Eye on Water. It's basically a tool to put people in the driver's seat on their, on their usage, right? So it's, A, it puts it at their fingertips. Right now, we have to wait three months, we go out, get a read, we send out a letter if you're high consumption, then we try to figure out and sleuth out what's going on. We can see this stuff real-time, so we're not going, oh, it was during the time period where you were irrigating. Did you check your irrigation system? Okay, no, now we're in the winter. So did you check all your toilets, all that stuff? They can see it every single day. And these things are so, so sensitive, it can tell a thermal expansion in the water. So the, the amount the water expands by coming up from underground, where it's fifty-five degrees, to your house, where it's seventy, the, the meter can tell that infinitesimally small value. So, ten percent of our new customers, or around eight hundred, have utilized and signed up. So what does that tell us? Ninety percent aren't using it, so we probably need some public ed there for people. And we do have websites, and we have handouts, and they're given the handout when they get the meter, but clearly, people need to know that's out there. Links are on our page, there's an app, there's, there's, if you want it, go find it, Eye on Water, it's right there, and you can get signed up. If you, if you have problems signing up, call our staff, and they can walk you through it. All right, so a big one for this year, we're, well, the last three or four years, we've been trying to pay down our cash reserves. We're being successful in doing that, but we still need to, we got a little bit of a ways to go. That should be, we should use up those cash reserves, the surplus cash reserves, this year. We were trying to use them up last year, but weather and life connived against us. So, so policy-wise, our reserve goal is six million dollars for emergencies. That's the hole in Long Lake Road that opened up a few years ago, right? That's the big, huge issues that we may run into, that we feel like that's the level with our consultants, that we should be able to attack most emergencies without getting emergency bond funding or things like that, to kind of correct an emergency. Then we have our O and M surplus, which is seven million, which is twenty-five percent of our yearly O and M, and that, the ups and downs of how we bill, and we take in bills every single month, but we don't charge our customers until quarterly. So we need cash on hand to smooth out those peaks and valleys of the, of the cash. So then, what I'm doing, there's a switch, the three million dollar in protected surplus, that's going to fund, A, it, I'm going to propose that that'll fund our inch-and-a-half down-to-inch customers. So when I make the proposal, basically what we want to do is take the inch-and-a-half customers and make, have them pay the same fixed fees as the inch customers, okay? And so then, that means a liability to the system of about three hundred thousand dollars when you calculate it out. What I'm proposing is basically that money comes out of the reserves. So I'm, what I'm proposing is we don't say, do the if-this, then-that. We basically don't charge the other customers more based on bringing that customer base down a level. The township this year eats that three hundred thousand out of reserves, okay? Then next year, when we do the full rate study, we'll consider all of that and kind of design the Cadillac as we go forward. So that's why I feel comfortable kind of taking on that burden. It is, and again, as I talked about earlier, significant, far significant portion of those inch-and-a-half customers are residential, and that is abnormal in our area. Like, Levonia has no inch-and-a-half residential customers, and they have a lot more customers than us. So that's the anomaly that we're trying to correct here on the interim basis. Three million is what we're projecting. I'm still, we're still getting bills in for the projects going on right now, and that, so that's why I got a question mark there. It's somewhat fluid. By the fourteenth, all those bills will be in and all the pay stuff, right around the fourteenth, so I'll know. But it's going to be right around three million, might be two point seven million. And we're looking at, again, structuring the rate such that we diminish those surplus reserves. And you'll see what I'm talking about in a second. Whereas, we're getting a five point three percent increase on water, I'm, I'm talking about passing on a two percent increase to customers, so that difference would come out of reserves. And then the ten percent increase we're looking at from WRC, I'm looking at cutting that down to four percent. So that, again, that, and we're taking risks. So that, again, that, and we're taking risk by doing that, so.
You have a total, you have a total amount on, on what we would not be passing on to the residents by doing that?
No, I'll know when we come with final, but basically, we're being proposed right now a five-point-three-eight, and we're gonna go with a two, and we're being proposed a ten percent, and we're gonna go with a four.
And we're gonna subsidize it until you can figure it out?
Yeah, basically, we have the reserves right now, so that, we wanna use them. And that was something that the residents wanted, was a stability of rate, so these not, these big, huge peaks and valleys. That's why we're talking about planning ahead for the Maple Road project, so we don't have... Like, if you look at the rate history in a West Bloomfield, for instance, they have years where they go zero, 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 then they have fifteen percent rate increase. We wanna do a more predictable, more flat-line increase that is in relation to our CIP projects and our plans for the future, so. Um, and that's allowed us, through, probably just through extra hot weather and extra consumption, that's allowed us to build up this reserve. So again, the key, because it's the denominator, and as this goes down, that increases everybody's rate. Um, so the key is, we purchase our water from SACWA. That's a consortium. In the first ten years of the relationship, we saved over eleven million dollars. And that, we stopped keeping track, I think that was like 2020. But that trend, one to two million dollars in savings overhead we've been with Great Lakes water, is what we can expect each year. Now, there's room to maneuver there as well with them, because we have full membership out there. We could bring in other people. We could, um, we could explore, we are exploring that with them and having discussions with SACWA on how to bring that down even more by either expanding the customer base or expanding our importance with SACWA. Uh, then we distribute that water to township customers, and then our sewage is treated by Oakland County WRC until it leaves the, you know, eight-mile corridor, and then it, it gets transitioned over to Great Lakes water. So again, usage trends, that's the largest sewer treatment plant in the world, or used to be. It's probably in Dubai or something now, um, but that's down in southwest Detroit. Um, that graph right there, indicate, that's our twenty-year historical usage. It's a declining trend, right? And that's what we're dealing with. So we're, every two years or so, our usage declines by one percent. So that's something that has to be wrestled with. Uh, similarly, averages for water use, you see it diminishing. Oh, and this actually clearly displays our irrigation use, right? You see those disparities in May, June, July. That is the driver of your costs, right? That irrigation right there, so. Uh, this is our current rate. I just threw it in there, so you guys would see where we're at. So again, we're talking about grouping these inch-and-a-half customers in the MEU sense up with this, and, uh, the inch customers, and that's where you get that three-hundred thousand dollars worth of liability. It's something like seventy-two thousand a quarter, times four quarters, so. Next steps, again, I'll come back April fourteenth at seven. I'll recommend a rate approval for you. I'll see what the final number was that he comes out with on the reserves. That'll come together. Then we'll look at what we're comfortable with as far as our policies in the reserves and what we're able to kind of diminish that surplus and offset the rate increases. So that, and I, I mean, I hope you understand that I, when I tell you that we can augment that rate by those amounts, that is significant, right? And that's a big win for the, the ratepayers, you know, even though we're going up, we're definitely key. And that has happened the last three years. So that's a direct result of trying to pay down that surplus and be prudent with that. Um, so what the future holds, right? And we've gotta, you gotta really start trying to put some time into this. Clearly, I'm gonna help you guys with that, but we're gonna start doing, we're gonna do a full rate study next year, right? And these rate studies cover five to ten years, five good years, and then they kind of extrapolate out from there. Um, it's no joke to say that we probably could get to a point where we had a two-year or a five-year rate, because the two and four percent that I'm speaking to you guys about, those have been in the rate ever since we've, in the rate study, ever since we did the study. So we're not straying from where they thought we should be at this time in the rate. So that's comfortable with me. Again, I'm kind of facetious when I say that we can pass a five-year rate, because I don't think that'll ever happen, um, but that's, that's why I say those type of things, so. Um, as part of that survey, we'll do a preference with the, we did it with the participants at the public meetings. I would say we need to open that up. We didn't have very, despite how, you know, fired up people are about water rates and, you know, and it's, you know, very personal to them. We had like ten people that showed up at the public meetings. So I'd like to drive more performance or get the survey out to more people, uh, because they really are driving the rate decisions that you guys are making and that we're making. And if you have a small cohort, they're driving the ship for everybody else, so. Uh, so the survey, public meetings, there were two of them the last time. We'll do a study session with the board in particular. Then the rate consultant will come in, and they'll do a final presentation of the, uh, report to the board. We'll formulate the policies through that and develop the rate, and so that at the end of that rate-making or that rate-study process, we should come up with the rates for next year. Um, so that's kind of, the things you guys are gonna have to prepare for is, again, those push-and-pull funding decisions. Do we take a Maple Road and say, "Listen, we can't do it for seven million in one year. We have to split it, and that means we're gonna rip Maple Road up twice, you know, or impact it two times over two construction seasons." Do we say, "No, you know, the hazard of that is too great. Let's get in, you know, only do one mobilization on Maple Road. We know we're gonna save there, but we wanna fund this through a bonding," uh, or something of that nature, right? Um, those are, or do we wanna raise the rate to fund these CIP projects that we have going forward? Right now, baked into the rate is three million dollars, a million and a half on the sewer side and a million and a half on the water side. So we could either live within our means on that and only do three-million-dollar projects, or we could increase that amount of rate-funded CIP in there, or we could bond, or we could make it.
You figure that by project or by year?
Uh, it, either way, bonding.
Because you're gonna try and do Maple Road, you said it's seven million in one year, but the other ones, you'd have to split it up.
Right, well, we're saying, just off the cuff, it doesn't make as much sense to split Maple Road into two, because of the impacts and because of the staging. Whereas, uh, a smaller neighborhood, you can have a good dividing line. You can pull back for a year and then come back in where Maple Road you can, so. They, because we're literally, the right-of-way is very tight on Maple, so we're gonna have to put it where it's in the side of the road right now. There's too many conduits, and we'd need like thirty-five easements from private owners. That's insurmountable, and would cost us more, so we're gonna put it in the roadway, right? And so that's another thing, forcing this to happen. Um, monthly billing, is that a priority for this board? From a water operator's standpoint, when they're in the driver's seat on, you know, their water usage with Eye on Water, how much does a monthly bill? You know, I have some faith in our customer base, that they can divide the bills out and understand that that's for a quarterly bill, but that's a policy decision that we're gonna have to look at, right? And that is a cost on the system, because we're gonna be sending out a hundred percent of bills instead of a quarter of them, you know, every billing cycle. But that's, you know, a customer service thing. Um, tiered rates, like I talked about, are we gonna still have a fixed component? Um, are we gonna have a fully-tiered rate? Is there only gonna be three tiers, four tiers, right? That's when we start to look at the data, but that's where you guys need to start, you know, thinking what, how you wanna see, you know, what you see for the future of the water rate here in Bloomfield Township, how we're gonna fund this CIP, and kind of where that marries in with the customer service aspects, so. Um, so that's kind of like your homework going, and that's like, they wrote a manual that's like that thick about it. So, you know, that's what you gotta do in the next year, right? So we will be there, obviously, to help you through that process. We have ideas. Again, the, this, this group has always, um, supported a fixed-fee component, again, because of our, the nature of how we're charged. Um, but, you know, who's to say that we shouldn't take a little more risk, right? Now, I remember this, the board argued over twenty-one and twenty-three percent in the last time on how much of the fixed fee, right? So, so I think there's some strong feelings in that regard, so. Um, but those are the things that we're gonna be wrestling with and really shaping the future of how this goes, right? Where, and from the CIP standpoint, we're done in these smaller neighborhoods. We've, we've kind of redone all the hotspots, so now we're onto these bigger transmission main projects that get out into Square Lake Road, that get out, well, not Upper Square Lake, Lower Square Lake, right? So we're not gonna re-tear up what MDOT just got done rebuilding. Um, but Lower Square Lake Road, we have a, a transmission main in there as well, right? So that's the type of projects we're looking at now. Maple, Long Lake, Square Lake, right? That, that's big animals, so. With that said, I'm gonna be doing work over the next, with our rate consultant to nail down the numbers that I told you, um, but there, I wouldn't tell you them if they weren't a near certainty at this point. Um, and I'll be moving forward to kind of get everything ready and, um, button everything up to get back to you April fourteenth. So my real main question tonight for you guys is, um, are you comfortable taking the risk of, do you, or do you desire to move those inch-and-a-half customers down to that inch? And are you okay with kind of taking the liability, um, for doing that, the three-hundred thousand dollars, and taking it out of reserves for this year? And then we'll go back to the drawing board next year, when we do the full rate study and, and look at that MEU structure and just how that lays out, so.
All right, thank you, Noah and Paul and Adam. A lot of work here, a lot of slides. Do you wanna open up for questions, Neil?
Sure. First of all, thanks for the presentation, Noah, and also thank you for listening to the board. Uh, most of the people on the board last year, as you know, were in favor of having a one-group, uh, pipe rate, one and one and a half together, and we said we would defer and, uh, revisit it now, which I'm, so thanks for presenting it. I'm certainly in favor of combining the one and a half to the one inch, which I thought, as I stated last year, I thought it should've been. And, um, along with that, certainly in favor of taking the three-hundred thousand dollars or so out of the reserves to, um, supplement what's needed. So I think that's a, a good approach, and, um, everything else that you've presented is certainly very much in line with what we discussed last year, and, um, as far as the tiers. And, uh, I'm glad to see that we made so much progress on the meters, because that's really an important driver in getting us to the point where we wanna be on a potential monthly, uh, billing, which I think is important. A lot of people, um, are interested in that due to, um, certainly what you went through, Val, and a lot of other people I know, um, other people on this board have had the same issue. A lot of people on the township, a lot of, where there's been leaks and they weren't able to discover it. So that's one way, certainly will be very, a very helpful tool towards that, so. Um, I'll start with that, so thank you.
So, um, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for being there when I messaged you and go, "Hey, I've got a leak." Um, I am in favor of giving relief to the one-and-a-half-inch people, but, and you told us, because my next question is gonna be, well, where is this getting paid for? Is this going in, everybody divides us up, you're using the surplus? But are you also, um, giving the commercial, the one first, the one-inch rate as well? Or is it just residential?
Yeah, there's a, the, the cohort within there, it's like a hundred, I got the note right there. There's very few commercial entities within that cohort, so it doesn't even...
So they all change?
Yes, yeah, yeah, and that's equitable across the board. You start to, even when I looked at putting the cost back in on those groups, it just got, like, if you try to put it, we don't have a commercial base to couch it in, so you're talking a very large dollar amount if you put it with everybody up above. And if you put it down below, I think it, it was like twenty dollars a quarter on the bill, so that, you know, is market too. I think it, just the best, since we have a surplus, we're trying to pay down. We're at the precipice of changing our, our rate structure next year. It makes sense to me.
Well, and it's interesting what you said, because we've said it, this would, when we're done with the meters, would allow us to go to the monthly billing, which would give people more information, but it will be at a higher cost for the monthly billing. But I can tell you from, you know, I got my meter, for whatever reason, I got one of those early letters. And they gave me the Eye on Water, and I said, "Oh, that's cool." I put it on my phone, and I never put my account number in for probably three-quarters of a year. And I was, I ran into a resident, and they asked me questions about, they've got a one-and-a-half-inch. We had a big, long talk, um, about water and water rates, and they said, "Yeah, we found this leak because on the app." And so my husband and I went home, and we immediately activated the app, and it's like, it says, "You have a one-point-six-to-two-gallon-per-hour leak." And we were floored, and we have no idea how long it was. It seemed to think it was January, but I, I think it was longer than that. But it allowed us to watch it, monitor it, shut off different valves at different bathrooms, and the whole, we turned the whole house off, um, and we were able to find it and fix it. And it turned out it was the last toilet that we shut off. Um, but I think it's an interesting thing that you mentioned about maybe we don't wanna even go to the monthly, because when you look at that app, you can see, and like, I know Michael had a nightmare with, he didn't know he had a leak, and he had a horrendous bill. Um, ours was, you know, it was going up, but we had a son move back with us last year, and it always goes up, and we just sort of said, "Well, it is what it is." Um, so now I'm curious to see if it's gonna go down, because this was just in the last few weeks. But, you know, with the app, you see what's going on, and you would, it, it emails you. It would email me and say, "You have a leak. You haven't addressed this leak." And, and then it would say, "Oh, congratulations, no leak today." It, it's simple to use. It was simple to do. You just have to put your account number in, and it, uh, it's awesome. And it, it might be something we wanna talk about, maybe not going to the cost of monthly billing, because you can see, I can see within a couple of hours, usually around a couple hours behind. You know, I can see what happened this morning and the afternoon, and in the afternoon by maybe bedtime. So it's not like instant, but it's within hours.
Right, yeah, it reports three or four times a day, so that's what you're seeing there, yeah. And, you know, I think monthly billing does allow us to, like, if I saw ninety percent utilization on the Eye on Water, I'd be more apt to say, "Yeah, monthly, maybe we don't need it for that reason." But, you know, it, since we do have to educate the public on the value of water, since the Eye on Water app, maybe that's just the opportunity to touch our customers that extra amount of times.
Well, and you said only ten percent right now are doing it, but I think absolutely we should be promoting it, because, um, incredibly helpful tool. I wish I had done it sooner.
Yeah, we get, I mean, I've heard the stories, your own directly, but then outside my office, I can hear the, we, ten, twenty people that have found leaks because of this stuff, and that's just what I've overheard in the office. So it's a great tool if people, you know, get on board.
And, and very simple to use, but yeah, if we only get, say, half of the people using it, then there's half the people that don't have that access, so. Thank you very much.
Chris? Yeah, um, to echo what, um, Neil had mentioned, I think grouping the one-and-a-half-inch pipe with the one-inch is a great idea, especially because, again, it's not commercial, like, you talk about like a Livonia or some of these other communities. We have a different client base, specifically based in our estate-sized lots, as well as the type of, the nature of the homes we have. Uh, it's a different demand. So, um, with that, I think that makes sense. I think using, um, our reserves to pay that down makes sense because of the year that we're talking about, because we're looking at a entire rate study in the next year. If we were not doing that, I would not wanna do that, but because we have the surplus and we're looking to completely look at our rates for the next year, I think that makes total sense, and I appreciate the way you're bringing it to us. Um, thank you also for giving us kind of the overall thought of where we're gonna be on terms of water rates being approximately two percent higher, as well as approximately four percent higher on the sewer rates. Again, we can discuss more as a board if we think that's the right direction, or how we're gonna pay for that Maple Road transition line, because again, either we bond, we pay for it. It, it's that simple, right? We're not gonna just kick down the cane, kick the cane down the road. That's not what we're gonna do as a board, so. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, nobody thinks it's acceptable to have additional water main breaks.
No.
In a planning perspective, especially not this operator.
It's just what's the most fiscal-prudent way to pay for it. And is that binding, bonding, based on what our treasurer says and what we think? Or is it finding a way to slowly build up that reserve?
Right, and that's where I gotta blow the whistle for, uh, Olivia and Cory. Have, we have great twenty-year, uh, asset management plans that drive the five-year planning. So we're, especially with Cory now, you know, hitting his third year, really getting, you know, we're out of the COVID, I hope, era, you know, and, and impacts, you know? Um, so that's gonna allow us to really hone in on a good rate and, and kind of drive that risk level up a little bit, you know, which I think everybody, I, my, I, I think the risk level needs to be ratcheted up a little bit, so.
And you mentioned talking about the monthly rates. Um, it'll also help us with, like, we have that reserve specifically for the, the money going out, but not money coming in on the quarterly rate basis.
Yes.
If you go to the monthly, that possibly could change what that mon, monthly is, based on what the consultants may say.
Correct.
So, uh, that, that provides us another avenue to capture that revenue, so. Thank you very much.
Um, I, I would like you to go back a few slides to the water usage. Perfect. Um, there's something that you said that didn't make sense. It was, um, and that was what we were getting charged for the sewage treatment. Uh, and over the past ten years, our usage, water sewage treatment usage has increased yet one-and-a-half percent, uh, decreased on an annual basis. Again, those seem counterintuitive. I thought this chart here on monthly usage, it would be interesting to know where we have, how we have changed over the last ten years, and if the data could support going back and asking for lower rates, uh, for the sewage treatment. Because if we are actually using less... Because if we are actually using less water and they're claiming we're going up and we have the data to support that we're using less, uh maybe we can get some uh.
The problem and the key factor there is we're under a, there's uh other inputs into the sewer that are not consumable water. So the sewers are leaky and all that, that we're under a state order right now to correct leaks within our sewer. So is every other Evergreen Farmington community. So the inputs that are in are more than, or the output coming out is more than all the inputs coming in, and that indicates a leaky sewer and we all pay for that.
Okay.
So there's an additional charge to, for the repairs for that?
No, well, yeah, we have to, we have, we're under a state order to fix and repair those sewers, so that's.
So that's what brings it up more?
Well, but no, the, they have to treat every gallon of water that goes through that pipe regardless if it's rainwater or sewage.
Okay.
So the rainwater in the pipe creates more treatable water down that we get charged for. So it's the leakiness of the pipes.
Okay.
Um, and a lot of our sewers are along wetlands and along lakes and that type of stuff, so.
Do we, we have some combined sewers, don't we?
Yes.
In the village?
Yep.
Which adds to the problem.
Yeah, those are charged a little differently because there was a rainwater component and they go to a tank, but yes, it's a different animal. A he, a monstrous animal, yes.
Uh, the um other thing of note was, uh, two weeks ago, we were talking about investment income from water and sewer and we were estimating it to be around three hundred thousand. That would help offset a lot of your concerns. Um, I was given a hundred and eighty page report on those calculations. Uh, for treasury, there are charges for investing and there are charges for collections. Um, and it appears based on the report, the majority of that is covered in central services fees. Uh, now, since the investing is um portion is only getting a benefit from the general fund, I'm not sure why we're paying that and not getting investment income, but that's something I believe the board should address separately. And hopefully they will give you a different number for that when you do your calculations. Um, but I think that was of note. Uh, I am uh, I do not like the fixed fees altogether, because the initial uh reason why those fixed fees were set up was based on potential use. So um I would like to see it more driven by uh, and there's no calculation going back that we've shown the residents that um, you know, for example, sending out a bill costs money. Uh, so everyone's going to have to pay their fair share of that fee, and it doesn't change no matter how big or small you are. Um, there are some other aspects regarding to uh central services fees that tie in very nicely and other fees, however, but if we can't make that determination, and it's not based on size. Uh, the new LTE fees are based on a per meter basis. Um, and it's, there's no variation between if you have one meter or two meters. For the water sewer meter replacement project, if you have two meters, you will pay a premium for the second meter. Uh, none of that's in there. Uh, hopefully the rates, the calculations that come up will address those issues.
We will definitely look at that. If Val brought that up, you know, we kind of got our hands slapped a couple of years ago for that. So I will say the fixed fees, um, we proportionalized the fixed fee amounts based on the MEU structure. The fixed fee was always there because there's a percentage of our water fees that are fixed and the hundred percent of sewer. So what the, we surveyed the residents. They said they wanted um, you know, equity for the low users and the high users. So the MEU structure was the chosen way to proportionalize those rates. Everybody paid the same flat fee before, whether you were here six months or gone, you know, that was the.
And if that was the intent, uh, there's been no follow up on the intent, because uh, uh, as usage goes up, um, the amount being collected and going into reserves increases dramatically. And at the end of the year, we don't look at what we collected extra, because I I do appreciate the fact that the township looks at a minimum consumption level, because we have to collect enough when it is a wet year. Uh, but we don't come back and say, this is the amount we collected extra and above, because it was a dry year. And we don't make uh take into account in a formal way uh during the budgeting process. Uh, we really don't find that number out until we get the audit results. So um, uh, that does not happen. Um, I am concerned about the new meters in regards to um, uh, individual concerns regarding uh, regarding radiation and the um, collect uh because of the signals going back and forth um from the cell towers uh to collect the data. So there was a study in twenty eighteen by the National Toxicology Program, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and uh the two G and three C cell phone services. I believe those are what are being utilized to collect. And in that study, it shows that there's clear evidence of an association with tumors uh in the hearts of male rats. So I, I'm concerned about the individuals who don't want to have that type of reading. Uh, what's the opt out policy? There is also a court decision in DC um regarding the FCC updating the um radiation levels and the exposure individuals have. They didn't want to do it, because it was showing that the level should have been reduced. And in that finding, in that court decision, uh, the failure of the commission's conclusions regarding the adequacy of its testing procedures, particularly as they relate to children and its conclusions regarding the implications of long term exposure to RF radiation, exposure to RF pulsation and modulation. So pulsation and modulation, every time a signal comes in, collects a reading, goes back.
Noah, are you familiar with these studies?
Yeah, I mean, SEC says that they're safe. Uh, it's way less exposure than a typical making a cell phone call for two reasons. One is it's only transmitting the data two or three times a day for a one to five second period. This is typically, the water meter's not located next to your ear like a phone would be.
That, that is correct, but it is, it is additive in nature and.
We have radio reads right now in place.
Correct. And uh, again, this study is particularly related to that. The court decision related to the kids, showing that it's lower than what was out there and what's been reported. I don't know what that new data is, and we also have Robert Kennedy Junior. He is now, he's now.
Well, if they make the technology illegal, we will not be implementing it.
And that means that we have to pay a lot more to get it changed out.
Well, I think there'd be some liability on the supplier at that point, making what would be made one meeting claim.
And we know they're not going to be able to afford to change all those out.
That.
Um, and then there's the California Department of Public Health in twenty seventeen. They uh reduced uh released um uh guidance on cellular phone usage because of the impact on children. So I think there's enough info, and there's even uh over a thousand peer reviewed studies.
The health impact or the social impact?
No, cancer. The impact of cancer.
Have you been supplied any of these reports with concerns or cautions with any of this equipment?
I have the data for the approvals from the FCC that are germane to the signals that we have, period. A lot of, I've heard of a couple of these cases. Some of them were gas meters, uh, some were DTE stuff, but we have the radio reads in place right now and the signal's going out twenty-four seven from the the technology we currently have.
And have we been reported any health effects from these? Have there been any health effects that have been reported in Oakland County or the state of Michigan by using these meters at this point?
Not that I'm aware of. I received uh one call from a resident whose mother is, has a sensitivity to the, these waves, uh, and there's something to that, um, but I have not had another credible instance.
Like through headaches or something?
Her mother has a long history of uh having a sensitivity to RF exposure. It actually should get better for her, because again, the radio reads are going out all the time and these packets are only going out on, you know, very infrequently.
Mark, was there any other statement you want to make on it?
Uh, well, I, I think individuals should have an opt out if they want one.
We can look at that. I've done the math. What what people want is an opt out with no charge, and that's not going to happen, because we're going to have to pay somebody to go around and read the actual meter. So it would be an opt out and we'd have a charge. They'd have to buy the meter, because we don't supply that meter. And then they would have to pay whatever the cohort was, we'd divide that up.
So there is a section option, just has a cost to it.
What the, we haven't gotten to implement even a, because I've only had one person that was credible and that um, and they don't want to pay.
And if they went with that second meter and they, let's say they paid for it, would that second meter note if there was a water leak like Val was referring to?
We probably, no, because we'd go for a, we'd have to do a manual.
Right.
You know, strictly just a rudimentary moving part meter.
Other than this one instance you talked about, anybody, any other resident at this point indicate they want to opt out of the meter?
There were one or two others, but they were, it was all next door stuff. They had not incredible information.
Did they come to you?
They talked, they spoke to me and I.
And after that, did they care?
No.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Mark, anything else you'd like to cover?
Uh, yes. Um, uh, the, it's, no, I think I covered everything.
Okay, any other questions on item three for Noah?
I guess I just have a quick follow up, sorry. Um, you and I did talk privately about the secondary meters and when we tried to put a charge in for those, it it caused quite a backlash. But in the eye of fairness and that, you know, once, once you have that secondary meter, we then take care of it, we replace it, we maintain it. There is a cost to us and irrigation is a high use. So those meters are getting a lot of use. It's not like they're going to last forever. Um, you know, is there any discussion or are you thinking maybe next year when we get closer to the rate schedule, we need to revisit that?
Dig back into that next, yeah, and and I think public education will be key, because we had thirty-four um people speak at that meeting and most of them were not secondary irrigators, so they were speaking against their own interests. So we definitely need to educate the public on that. By ordinance, I'm required to charge a fee for the care of those meters on secondary meters, but the fee right now is zero, but in our ordinance, I'm required to carry that fee. So I, and what we're doing, we're crunching the numbers on what, like just the raw change out, like not a full burden fixed fee, but what is just the raw change out over a fifteen year life expectancy of the meter and and implementing some sort of charge like that.
Yeah, because it seems like in fairness to, you know, whatever it is, thirty percent that have the, I'm just guesstimating. Um, the secondary meters, everybody else is bearing the cost, because they're they're getting it for nothing. And so in, you know, in fairness, I'd appreciate if we look into that for the next go round.
Are you talking about the secondary meters? So people like, well, um, so they're not charged for sewage from what, for for irrigation?
No, I'm saying that there, there's no fee.
For the second meter?
For the second meter at all, because when they put those in twenty years ago, they were told there would not be a fee.
Right.
But then when we did the study, the study came back and said there was literally no community that didn't charge for a second meter. And in fact, those were not common and not recommended, but we have them, so it's a burden on our system. So in fairness to people, the majority that don't have them, um, like you said, even the raw cost, the something.
And again, in fairness, they probably shouldn't pay the fully burdened fixed fees, because a lot, unless they have a second service feeding that uh meter, because they only have the one pipe coming in, so there, I don't think there'd be a basis to charge them the entire fixed fee. That's why we were talking like a hybrid uh fixed fee, and I look over there, because that's my brain trust that we're going on. These are the things we talk about.
All right, thank you, thank you Noah. If no, no other questions, let's, we'll close item number three and move on to number four.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, introduction of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance of multiple family residential accessory uses in the B two community business district, presented by Patty Volker, Director of Planning and Building and Ordinance. Patty, welcome.
Thank you. Well, we're going to talk about something other than water rates, water. And uh, so before you tonight, it's an introduction. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance that um you have in your your packet that speaks very specifically to the B two's district. And, oop, there we go. So this ordinance is specifically talking about, in the B two district, there's permitted uses. Um, and it also acknowledges that there are instances where, similar to other zone districts, where you can have uses that could be permitted, but maybe more at an ancillary level or more as a um, as a secondary um value, if you will, of a use within a particular um development. And so this is really speaking to, uh, we have examples where we have the B two district next to our, our um, our um RM, which is our multiple family zone district within the township. And with that uh relationship, in our zoning ordinance, we very specifically have these placed so that it is a uh transition and sometimes, um, you know, considered a buffer between residential, single family residential and um more of an intense use. And so when we have these examples, if we can go back to um, the map here, here we go. Um, we have examples within the township that have these abutting uses of a B two and an RM that would lend itself that in many cases, the RM district has uh amenities that are being proposed. Um, and instead of accommodating it on the premises, that potentially could be accommodated on the the abutting B two district. And um as examples, uh, we have um one on South Boulevard and Squirrel, the Noble Residence, and we'll be talking about that a little bit later in the agenda. Uh, here's another location, Square Lake and Woodward Avenue, the Avalon Assisted Living. Again, they have that abutting um orientation. Uh, Long Lake Road and Telegraph Road, there's a Devon Square and Willow Way condos, so there are, there are abutting um zoning districts. Uh, Maple Road and Telegraph, we have Fox Croft and condos, um, which is, you know, identified with the B two and the RM. And then also at Maple Road and Telegraph, we have the Sunrise Assisted Living. So going back to uh what is being proposed is that when there is an occasion where we have an RM district adjacent to a B two district that we're suggesting to allow for those ancillary uses that are customarily found in a, in a multiple family zoning uh development. It could be pools, uh cabanas, gardens, pathways, accessory structures, those that are very specifically um intended to be utilized, clubhouses uh for the um, for the residents, but maybe not necessarily accommodated on the RM property, but that abutting B two district. And so this um ordinance tonight is uh drafted so that it accommodates a um request so that if a multiple family is adjacent to a B two district and they're able to provide those amenities on the B two district, as long as it met those criteria of the um accessory uses uh within our present zoning ordinance, then it would be permitted. Um, and the, the language was heard, or at least considered, I should say, um, at the planning commission meeting on January twentieth. The planning commission um considered the the language and the different examples that we um offered and wanted to clarify that it's only under those instances where there's abutting zone districts. So the uh language was amended, provided a a review by our township attorney. And then at our public hearing um on February seventeenth, the language that's being presented to you tonight does do just that. That it speaks to um the instance within the ordinance where there is um, in the B two district where there is an abutting RM uh property, that there can be accessory uses and accessory structures permitted in an RM district on that B two um property, as long as it complied with the standards of the RM district. The um, the example that um was referenced in our staff report um is also very similarly found in our B one, B two, B three, OR one and ML districts, meaning that there's acknowledgement of lesser intense land uses in um zone districts that are permitted in a, in an adjacent zoning classification. So this is not unusual in our structure of our zoning ordinance, um, but it's, it's helpful in going forward with um, you know, projects that might prevail upon itself um going forward. Um, and then obviously we have a project that will be discussed later on today. So with that, I'll answer any questions. But the intent, I'm sorry, for the um, this introduction is if if um you could consider setting a public hearing date for April fourteenth.
April fourteenth, got it. All right, any questions for Patty?
I don't have any questions, but I think this is a great thing for us to look forward. Again, just continue to adapt our ordinances based on what we're seeing from the need of a lot of our residents and our developers and just continue to push forward. So thank you for this.
Would you like to make a motion on that, Chris?
Unless, if we all says a comment, I would love to.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
I, I'm concerned that, um, uh, we have these business districts set up. They generate more tax revenue, um, and there are other opportunities to benefit the township, uh, and even services. Uh, so, uh, when we're promised, uh, and items are being developed and approved based on one direction and then a few months or a couple of years later, nothing happens and the development changes. And in particular, the one on, uh, uh, South Boulevard and Squirrel Road, we're promised in our community a strip mall. Uh, potential for a coffee shop, few amenities we don't have in that area. So now what we're hearing is, um, we're not going to get those amenities that were promised on and approved. And, uh, we were, a lot of us were looking forward to, uh, having some of those services back that we lost when the business is shut down. So, um, uh, I don't think, uh, I, and I think that's something that the board should consider is, is with the reduction in revenue and opportunities, uh, and lack of business space. We talked about that earlier today as well. Thanks.
Patty, do you have any comment about that?
Um, not necessarily, um, relevant to the zoning ordinance amendment, but I'm, I'm sure we'll have more comment and discussion at the next item having to do with the rezoning and the site plan. That might answer some of his questions.
Okay, thank you.
So I would like to make a motion as we approve, uh, the proposed ordinance amendment, and we'll have the public hearing set for April fourteenth.
Support.
Support, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, six to one, thank you Patty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, item number five, introduction of rezoning requests and site plan for expansion of the Noble Residential Development presented by Patty Volker. Patty, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, so this is also an introduction. The intent of this introduction is at the conclusion of the presentation, do consider setting a public hearing date. So I wanted to get that right out from the beginning. Um, so this proposal, uh, is one of which you'll have some familiarity with. The, um. Let's go to the other PowerPoint. There he comes.
Here comes the brain trust. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. So this request, oh, here we go. Uh, this request is, um, building upon, um, a project that was approved in two thousand eighteen. This is part of a master plan update as well as a rezoning request, site plan, lot split, a very comprehensive proposal. At this, at that time, there was a, um, site plan that was approved that allowed for the, um, multiple family residential, which you're seeing, um, surrounded the, um, corner, uh, it's South Boulevard and Squirrel. And, uh, the two thousand eighteen plan showed two, uh, resident, excuse me, commercial, uh, buildings to accommodate, um, commercial uses with a curb cut on Squirrel and also, uh, two curb cuts, um, on South Boulevard, primarily to service that commercial component, but then, um, with opportunities for, uh, connectivity due to the fire marshal's, uh, review and, um, and, um, specific criteria with the development agreement. Um, this developer is now wanting to take that B two property, acquire that B two property and incorporate it within, uh, the entire Noble Development. Um, as we see in the aerial, you can see the residential development that is well on its way. It's kind, it's in its final stages of construction and we have the vacant corner at, at the B two. The proposal before you tonight is, as in, as I'm introducing this request, is a site plan and rezoning, meaning that they're wanting to, uh, take a portion of the property and rezone it to residential, um, uh, multiple family residential to accommodate a single building, uh, for five additional units to be added to the residential, uh, component of the Nobles with a detention pond and also an access point, um, from South Boulevard, reducing that, um, that, um, secondary access from South Boulevard, uh, which would be closer to the intersection. Uh, this proposal also, as you can see, eliminates the curb cut on to Squirrel, uh, not having a need for that circulation and thereby, um, addressing any of the concerns that were, um, uh, present at the time that this was reviewed by Squirrel residents and also, uh, the thought of just the, um, circulation within the development. Um, the other half of this project is what we were just talking about, is those amenities for the Noble Residence. Um, so what's being presented is a clubhouse with an attached pool, there's a cabana, uh, there is a park-like area, there's a dog run, um, there's, uh, individual, um, access points to be able to utilize and service the clubhouse. And then also having that secondary entrance along South Boulevard to mimic and continue the, the residential, um, um, design, if you will, along South Boulevard. Um, so the, um, proposal calls out in their landscape plan that the intention is to, to continue that residential feel along South Boulevard and having that same feeling wrapped around to Squirrel, you know, by, um, having this be incorporated as the entire project being, uh, part of the Noble, um, development. The, uh, the design or the site plan incorporates a lot of the same design features of the, the first phase, if you will. So the same, um, features of the entrance gates, the signage, the, um, the, the gates and the, the landscape so that it's very clear that this is part of the residential entrance way, uh, similar to, you know, the, the first phase, if you will. Um, and I'll keep up this landscape plan to talk a little bit about the, the, the proposal. Um, with the request for the clubhouse and the pool and the cabana and those amenities I was speaking of, um, in applying the provisions of the RM district, just by the mere fact that we have this property at a corner and we're very familiar with having double frontages when we're talking about, you know, even our single family, um, properties and having to go to the zoning board of appeals when you have, you know, double frontages and you want to put, you know, a fence in the front yard. They too had to go before the zoning board of appeals and address a lot of these accessory structures because of the fact that they are now in a front yard along either South Boulevard or Squirrel. So the, the fencing, the, um, the, the, um, piers, signage, the, um, the dog enclosure, the fencing, um, the fencing around the pool area and the, um, the pergola, um, the, um, the also the driveway that is leading to a service, um, area within the clubhouse and also the, um, enclosure around the dumpster are all these elements that end up being in the frontage, very typical of, you know, residential development. However, this project did have to adhere to those provisions. So the clubhouse is, is being, um, proposed to be very compatible, um, to the, the residential development and it's clearly very residential in nature. You can see from this rendering, you know, the, the dog park, the enclosure, um, uh, area and then also, um, you know, seeing the hints of, of that area that's behind, uh, which is part of the, um, the pool area. And the clubhouse is intending to, again, service just its residents, so it's offering amenities such as gathering room, a leasing office, a maintenance component and storage. Uh, because of the pool, they had some pool storage needs, uh, there's a covered porch and, um, a fitness room, and I believe there's even, um, feminine women's, uh, obviously facilities, but also a, a small cafe. So clearly looking to, you know, allow for those amenities that the, the residents would, would enjoy. Um, here's some, uh, details of those fixtures and features that are considered accessory and would require going to the, the ZBA because of not its location, but not, or not because of its, they're being presented, but because of their specific location in the frontage. Um, the lighting is very subdued and intentional to the residential, uh, development um, for, um, illumination around the clubhouse area, but also be compatible with the residential, um, lighting and also the residential units themselves. The, um, clubhouse design are pulling from materials that are, uh, very traditional and reflective of the, the residents already on the premises, as you can tell from these colored elevations, and the material boards are very similar and complimentary to the residents. Looking at the additional building that they're looking to build on that portion of the property to be rezoned to RM is this individual, um, single building, um, to accommodate five additional uses. Um, if you remember, all these used, uses and units have two, uh, attached car garages uh, in the, uh, front of the, the units. And there's also a patio area that will be screened, um, with the adjacent AC units also screened to the rear of each of these units. And so this is a continuation of that architectural style found within the Noble Development and the materials being again complimentary to the development that we see there today. Um, so the, the area that you're seeing, um, that is underdeveloped is what is intended to accommodate that, um, that retain, uh, the detention pond, that additional, um, five unit building for residents and then the, uh, multitude of, of amenities to provide for just its residents. Going back to the site plan and focusing on the first part of the request, which is the rezoning, um, just to go through some, um, technical questions, the entire site is a little bit over twelve acres. And they're looking to acquire this vacant two point three two acre commercial property and by rezoning just a portion of that two point three two acres, um, actually it's one point two, um, that, that would then accommodate and allow for that additional residential building. The remaining, uh, that results in mathematically, the, the eleven point, um, oh two acres to be RM and the one point oh nine acres to remain B two community business. Um, this does then still maintain the recommendations found within our master plan amendment that occurred back in two thousand eighteen. It still has that multiple family and the, uh, commercial uses, so it's consistent with the master plan. Um, it, um, meets the, that intent of that B two district that, um, is serving as a buffer, uh, to, to the residential area. Um, the B two uses that are being suggested are those, um, RM, um, amenities that the prior ordinance amendment of, was speaking to. Um, there is O one property that's to the, uh, west of this parcel, um, the T one, Team One Credit Union. Um, and then, um, the rest of the property is surrounded by either R one or R two residential property and then the city of Auburn Hills across the street from South Boulevard. Uh, this proposal did go before the, uh, was submitted to the Oakland County Coordinating Zoning Committee. Uh, it is a requirement, anytime there is a zoning, rezoning request that is on a boundary of a community adjacent to another that we submit it to Oakland County, uh, for their review. Uh, we've included that report. Uh, you'll both, you'll see that both the, um, staff of, um, Oakland County has, um, recommended approval of the, uh, rezoning. And at the conclusion of their meeting on March eighteenth, the, the Oakland County Coordinating Zoning Committee themselves unanimously supported the recommendation of the rezoning request. In fact, we received a very positive and supportive, uh, recommendation from Auburn Hills, um, having, uh, nothing less, um, than, um, uh, very, uh, positive comments regarding this development at that corner and, um, it's complement to Auburn Hills. The, um, the proposal, um, just going back to some relevant features is, is the, as of significance is the fact that there's no longer a curb cut from Squirrel. Um, so that obviously has, um, reduced the intensity of the use at that corner. Um, there also is not an additional curb cut on South Boulevard, again, because of the configuration of just that secondary entrance way into the development itself. Um, should there be, um, with that, um, drive that you are seeing as that secondary entrance to the Noble, um, the, uh, review by the road commissioner of Oakland County will be required. Uh, the, um, proposal does comply with all of the standards within the RM district relating, relating to density. Um, and the, um, the building themselves do extend beyond the hundred and twenty five foot maximum length. Um, however, the planning commission in their authority, uh, was able to determine that the length, um, of one hundred fifty five feet is still, um, meeting the spirit and the intent of the ordinance and they, um, they approve the extension. And just by reference, the prior project of phase one, if I want to refer to it as that, also received that same consideration by the planning commission. The clubhouse does have twelve parking spaces that are in front of the clubhouse, um, building, um, area to accommodate, um, the, um, residents' access to the clubhouse, um, but as, as well as obviously a, a very, um, um, defined, um, pathway, sidewalk system, um, throughout the, the development. There is, um, a loading area that is to the, um, to the north that accommodates access into that storage area. Um, but it's very minimal in nature and certainly is well screened by the vegetation that's being proposed. Uh, we did speak to all of the variances that were necessary just because of the dual frontage of this project, um, as, uh, has shown and, um, referencing again in a, in a similar fashion as the re, the other residential units that there are at grade patios to the rear of all of those, um, five units that are being proposed, identical, uh, to those, um, of the first phase of the, of the development. The design review board had an opportunity to review this proposal on, at their meeting on January fifteenth. After a review, um, and consideration of the material, there was a unanimous recommendation of support and a recommendation of, of approval to move on to the planning commission zoning board of appeals. Uh, when it went to the planning commission on February seventeenth, uh, there was an opportunity for public comment and at the conclusion of their discussion, uh, they too, uh, forwarded on a unanimous recommendation, uh, to the township board recommending approval of the, of the project as submitted, um, subject to seeking the variances from the zoning board of appeals. And so the last step before tonight's meeting was that the zoning board of appeals considered all the variances. They were all identified and listed for you in the staff report. Uh, the correction of the date is that, that meeting was held on March eleventh, uh, two thousand and twenty five. Um, and the conclusion of that, um, review by the zoning board of appeals, uh, was, uh, unanimous recommendation or unanimous action by the ZBA, uh, to approve all the accessory structures, uh, based on how it was presented, uh, before the board that evening. Uh, this project also was reviewed by various township departments. The fire department, um, has reviewed the revised site plan and found no issues or concerns and clearly that, um, they will be required to meet all of the, uh, fire department requirements. Um, police department found no objections or concerns with the proposal and, and noted no traffic impact concerns. And engineering environmental services also reviewed the, the project, um, and their revised preliminary plans. Also had a review by Hubble, Rothman, Clark, uh, both finding that the, um, the, uh, recommendation was to approve the site plan, um, to the planning commission and the township board of trustees as, as noted. And there will be an opportunity for engineering plan review, um, following, um, the township board, um, deciding to move forward in approving this project. Um, the tree protection and preservation permit would be required as well as easements, uh, for the existing safety path on Squirrel, um, as well as acknowledging again the road improvements that are being recommended along South Boulevard. Um, any changes along Squirrel would be the, uh, have to meet the requirements of the road commission of Oakland County. So that's an overview tonight of, of the proposal that's before you. Uh, again, this is a rezoning, uh, tied to a site plan request. Um, and we are asking the board to set a public hearing date for April fourteenth, uh, for review of this and act, final action by the, uh, the township, uh, for this request.
Thank you Patty. Any questions for Patty? Any comments? Mark?
Uh, yes, uh, why are, uh, they adding a retention pond? It was not in the official plan. What happened?
I'll have the developer come up and.
Yeah, Michael, come on up. Michael, come on up to the microphone and introduce yourself, please.
Michael Fenari with Manchester Squirrel LLC. It is not a retention basin, it is a detention basin.
It is a what?
A detention basin.
What's a detention basin?
It's where water is stored before it ultimately ends out, ultimately goes into the main stormpipe.
So if we go back to the original approved plan, there's no retention basin next to the commercial properties?
Just a second, you gotta-
Excuse me.
Just a second, Michael. You have to correct the terminology.
Sure.
There's a retention basin, and then there's a detention basin. Retention basin, from my understanding, holds water for a very long period of time.
That's correct.
A detention basin is a very temporary holding that water dissipates within what period of time?
I'm not sure the period of time.
But it's a very short period of time.
That's correct. If you go back to the original slide, the actual detention basin is built underground, under the cement on the commercial property, which is very expensive. We want to make this a more, a natural feature. We're making it a detention basin that holds water with a decorative fountain.
That's similar to what's along Squirrel on the existing site.
Similar, but this is gonna hold a little bit more water with a fountain.
Okay, so you're saying that the original plan had one underneath?
That's correct.
Had a retention basin.
A detention basin.
A detention basin.
Detention basin, with large pipes to store the water, very large pipes, seven foot in diameter.
That's what that's referring to.
That's correct. Patty's pointed that out. So those are very, very large pipes that are acting as a detention basin under the ground instead of an open surface pit.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just, I just wanted to say that in looking it over, and I didn't know about, because of the boundary that this went to the county-
Yes.
The county information was fascinating to show that the age and the years and how that corner has changed. That corner has been vacant for years, and I think it's a wonderful proposal. Personally, I think it would expand the Noble, would bring that whole unit together, expand their resources, and, you know, I'm sure it's, we always require landscaping, I'm sure it's gonna make it a beautiful corner as opposed to, I know it's been vacant for years, so I think it's a good plan, and it makes perfect sense with your prior issue with you were saying about how the zoning, it makes, this makes a perfect example.
Yeah, thank you. Just to follow up, yes, that was a failed corner for many, many years. It was a, one of the biggest eyesores in the township for many years. Most of the residents couldn't wait until we did something with that property. We had lawsuits, we had all sorts of things going on with that, and then we had a developer who came along with a great project, and in fact, it's done, it's been so successful that he's wanted to add on. Not only does he want to add on for his own benefit, of course, but at the same time, it's beautifying the corner. So the corner of Squirrel and South with the addition, all the landscaping, the clubhouse, the pond, the dog park will certainly beautify the area. There was opposition originally to that commercial area, that small commercial area on the corner. There were very few people who were in favor of it. There was never any commercial tenants identified, anything, it was only conceptual, and anybody who wants that corner so desperately could go to the vacancies across the street in Auburn Hills, because they've had a very difficult time filling those properties. So with that said, I'm, again, did a great job, Michael, and wish you-
One thing Patty forgot to mention was features. We have a dog washing station in the clubhouse. For your pets, for the residents.
Any other questions, Chris?
Yeah, I would like to echo trustee Barnaut on this. I think that just beautifies that corner. It has been vacant for a long time, and again, even when we tried to have commercial there, nobody was trying to do it. So the developer would be more than happy to develop if some businesses wanted it, and it stayed, remained vacant. So clearly the demand was not there, because developers are in the business to build something for somebody. So clearly this is an expansion of the Noble, which is good, and provides additional amenities for our township residents, and then beautifies that corner as people come into our community. Before they see this vacant land, this beautiful multifamily around it, this just beautifies that corner, so it's a great thing. So again, I echo trustee Barnaut on this. I think this is a great plan, and hopefully looking forward to passing it for you today.
Martin?
I have a couple, a question, maybe a comment.
Sure.
So as I look at this, the proposal, just to make sure I understand it, is to acquire this property, the property on the sort of left side of the map here would be rezoned residential to allow for the additional condos.
Correct.
And the property on the right-hand side of the road there, roughly right-hand side of the road, would be, would be developed in the way presented. In order to do that, you're proposing that we amend the ordinance to allow for accessory structures in a commercial area next to residential.
That's correct.
Okay. Could you achieve the same thing, and maybe not, I don't know the answer to this question, by just making the whole thing now residential?
I'll let Patty answer this question.
The challenge in that regard is that the master plan amendment back in 2018 spoke of the area to be recommended either residential or commercial, and the master plan map calls for that corner to be commercial. So that would take actually an amendment to the master plan for a request for all of that to be rezoned to multiple family, due in part by the township having a historical record of always maintaining the integrity of our master plan, and we've always developed pursuant to our master plan. And so to try to change the master plan in such a way that would be specific to this request would have gone through another six-to-nine month master plan update for a very isolated area. So the discussions that we had was, well, what is unique or consistent with this project? And the consistency is that we do have indications within our ordinance where you have lesser uses that are permitted in zone classifications that are either abutting or adjacent to a given zone district. And so I referenced the B1, the B2, B3, the OR, and the ML districts. So it's not unusual to be able to have amenities from a, of an abutting zoning classification as structured within our zoning ordinance. So working with our township attorney, we felt this was consistent. It maintained the integrity of our master plan, and it also then allowed for a project to go forward that has exhausted all other possibilities with this corner property.
Well, thank you for that answer. I'm actually really happy I asked it, because this is a perfect demonstration of the brilliance of the work that happens downstairs. There's a lot of issues that go into these developments, and what you're doing down there is not just putting up roadblocks to prevent appropriate development in the township, but you're working with developers to get solutions that are consistent with our historical practices in an efficient and effective way. So great work, you guys. I think this is really creative, brilliant. Now, here's my question, sort of my comment. When will this clubhouse be done? If it's, if this is all approved?
This season.
So the next election is in 2028. This could, this could be a perfect location for a precinct.
I'll put it on record.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that said, unless there's anything else, I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing date of April 14th.
Support.
2025.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Six to one. Thank you, Michael. Good luck.
All right. Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Item number six. We've had a lot of comments about the roads from residents, and they come in right now regularly because of the poor condition and the poor upkeep of our roads as, in the sense of paving, repaving, recovering. And so I've talked to a couple residents, and one was Jeff Salz, who's the chairman of our Planning Commission, about establishing about a 10-member committee to look into our road situation and come up with some recommendations to the Board of Trustees. And so we thought we'd make it formalized, and so raise the level of importance, but also the work that they have to put into it. And so having said that, we also will use this as a great tool to communicate with our residents through HOAs and other methods of where we are and how we got here, and to understand together the problems and then hopefully find some solutions. So having said that, Jeff, you're here, would you like to introduce yourself and make any comments? The other one right here, yes, sir. Thank you.
Jeff Salz, I'm chairman of the Planning Commission, and we've been talking about doing something, a clean slate type of approach. Nothing is off the table. Everything, every comment, every suggestion would be addressed to find new and creative ways to address the problem of local roads. We're talking about subdivision roads, basically. And ironically, today, in the Detroit News, there was a big article, Levingood, I think-
Levingood, Chad Levingood.
Whatever. Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, about this very problem and how Canton Township has solved that problem, has attempted to solve the problem, and it's exactly what we're looking at, that the county does not, one of the, one of the problems, the county doesn't pave or replace, rather, upgrade subdivision roads. We know that, that we have to pave them ourselves. And the other, the second problem we have is that we have no control over the roads because the county owns them. So we can't put up stop signs, we can't put speed limit signs, we can't put speed bumps up, we can't put no, do not enter turning hours, we can't do anything. We have no control whatsoever. So what we're looking at is repairing the roads, but also seeing if we can't create some way of controlling the roads more to our benefit, not the county's. So that's, that's what we're up to. And so we have a good group together, Mike and I have put together a group of nine individuals that are very, very good at this kind of thing, and we're gonna start working on it. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. And just so you know, we'll probably meet first in person and then do many of our meetings on Teams meeting to make it more convenient for people, and then hope to come back with some thoughts to the Board of Trustees. And if you have any questions about it, I'm here to answer them, and we'll probably have a couple of directors on board with us. I talked to Noah and Cory about joining us as well, so we have some-
It sounds like a great idea. As someone who, you know, got my own subdivision roads paved the hard way, I appreciate it. And I guess my only question would be, are you, is this group of people like dispersed to these?
Yes.
Because it'd be great to get, you know, multiple subdivisions and multiple parts of the township involved. No, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I hate to cap it, but we do have to cap it, but I'm sure we'll have some people come and go, and then, yeah, we want to keep them from different neighborhoods, especially the communication side. That's very important.
Great idea.
Yeah, it sure is.
What will be the ratio of non-t township employees to the size of the committee?
Well, I just talked to Noah, our director of DPW, and Cory, our engineer, because they'll know a lot of the rules and regulations and the issues-
And I think it would be beneficial to have them. I would rather have the majority to be residents of the township or committee members.
Oh, they will all be members of the township. And if any trustees want to join in, Mark, or something, you're always welcome to join us at any time and to listen in, and, because especially for Teams meeting, I think, Mark, can we open it up or we have to limit the participation from the elected?
Well, I guess the question is the intent of the committee. Is this going to be like a recommending body to Township Board?
I think first we'd come back with comments about, and then eventually, yes, recommendations.
I would believe, I would believe with that circumstance that there may be some Open Meetings Act issues where you would have to-
Post.
-conduct a public meeting.
In person?
Well, it wouldn't necess, well, yes, it would be, it would be required to be in person.
So if we have more than three elected that would join the meeting, then we'd have to post and have it in person.
Correct.
But if we kept it to, say, one or two-
Or the nature of the body, so if it's providing an advisory recommendation function. So we should, we can work on this and make sure it's compliant.
Yeah, I, there are some Open Meetings Act issues you're gonna have to be careful of, and I would be hesitant to recommend any type of subgroup meetings to avoid having to have a public meeting.
Okay.
Right. Openness is always our priority.
Absolutely. Yeah, and there's nothing to hide here. We need everybody to know what's going on with these roads. This is like, we're at a critical point.
Mike, maybe it's the kind of thing where you would be a part of it, so there's one of us. So maybe it's the kind of thing where, once you get things set up, you know, it could be like one trustee each meeting could monitor it, just to see what's going on, so we avoid the open meetings. We don't just say as many as of us that want to. Maybe have one guest.
Just a correction, I think maybe what you're talking about is avoiding an Open Meetings Act violation by having board members present. I think what we're talking about is the entity itself-
Right.
-will need to follow the Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
Just depends on the nature of why we create it and what its function is.
Right.
Okay.
So if it's an exploratory committee, sort of digging up information, that's one thing, but if it's a committee that's gonna give us a recommendation that we're gonna be asked to act upon, now we've got a, it's a public body.
I think ultimately it would be their-
Then it's a public body that needs to open, have, hold open meetings and so forth, which we can help accomplish, and I know we would, so details.
Right.
Does Mr. Roberts want to make a recommendation on how to reword the motion?
I believe the motion that's being made tonight is just to authorize the formation of this committee. So in that regard, I don't see any need to change the motion. Just moving forward, when the committee is being formed, we'll need to be careful about what it's specifically tasked with and how it's gonna be structured.
Okay. Okay. And anybody, Chris?
Yeah, just a quick question. So some of a lot of our other committees, there's gonna be a ton of work that these members are gonna be doing. Are we gonna have to fund any type of compensation associated with these committee members in order for their work, like we do for some of our other committees? I don't know if, I don't know if there's any thought on that.
I don't think so. You mean like you get paid, a trustee gets paid to sit in on a meeting or something?
Or like we do for our Planning Commission or for our ZBA, we pay those members associated with the work that they're doing.
Okay.
So I didn't know if that was something that you wanted to do or look into, because it, like you said, it's a ton of work, and the people are passionate about it, but it is gonna take a lot of time to do this.
Well, it does say volunteer, volunteer road advisory committee, so in that respect, it sounds like a volunteer position unless you change it.
I just was wondering what your intent was on-
Yeah, I think it would, but we can discuss if a trustee is gonna sit in on it, and then it becomes a little more formal, and then the trustee is usually compensated something for their time to attend a meeting. We could have those discussions, but right now I'd just like to get your approval to form the committee to start moving forward, and then officially appoint people, and then we can get our, we can get moving, and then we can always come back to the trustees. But like I said, the first initial meeting, we'd like to have in person, and then hold them on Teams if it's possible, if it's legal, Mark, to do that?
If it's possible, yeah. I'd have to look at it and look at what the meeting is to-
But I also think this is a great thing. I appreciate you bringing that to us. Again, this is a big issue, I know you're passionate about it, so let's find solutions. This is great.
Yeah, I think our community's gonna be passionate about it, everything we've gone through with these SADs and then watching potholes, and right now, the, you know, emails are coming in constantly. It's a shame we're in this situation.
Great idea. Make a motion that we give approval to create a volunteer road advisory committee.
Can I make a slightly friendly amendment, which would be to authorize the supervisor to make appointments to the volunteer road advisory committee?
Okay.
It's not really mentioned, but-
Yep.
Support.
Support. Any more other comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, everybody. Item number seven, consider extending the time public boards and commissions will meet in the Bloomfield Community Television Building, presented by Martin Brook, our Township Clerk.
Hey, folks. We've got a couple pictures of the current status of remodeling and some construction at the Bloomfield Township Auditorium, where these meetings are normally held. When we move from our normal location, which is determined on annual basis for public meetings, we have to, as a board, vote to do that. We previously did so to continue through April 5th, and it looks as though we, because of the construction timetables, that we needed some additional time. You can see that it looks like we're kind of maybe in the middle, and time's coming fast. It could be done on time, but as I indicated, we, this board, you know, if it weren't done on time, we couldn't hold a meeting anywhere other than there unless we vote today to authorize to extend the time which the Board of Trustees authorizes all public bodies to hold their meetings in the Bloomfield Community Television Building, rather than- bodies to hold their meetings in the Bloomfield Community Television Building rather than the Township Hall. And the new date, we'd expect to start regular meeting, new date we'd authorize, well, that would be, that would go through the 25th of April, which means the following Monday, all public meetings will occur once again in the auditorium.
It's exciting. It's looking good. If you haven't had a chance, come over and peek your head in, the colors, everything's coming together and the electrician's been in for quite some time now.
Right. Most of the work is, you know, there's remodeling work, there's some, you can see some painting has happened, there'll also be some resurfacing of dais, it's not a new one, just some resurfacing to make it more modern. Lot of the work, the big chunk of it is electronic related to upgrade the capabilities to broadcast and so forth. So, yeah, right.
Yeah. Okay.
Do I make a motion that we approve the extended temporary location?
Belle, I've got one question.
Oh, sure.
Is the cost going to change for the work being done?
No. No, it seems to be under budget at this point, so.
Awesome.
Support.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven up them, thank you. And having said that, no other in business, I'll look for an adjournment.
Move the adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.